Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
We forgot to put the spokesperson for the administration here. Bill Spearos is going to talk.
Thank you.
You know, we still have to take part of the comments. Listen to them.
We're all alone over there, Alan.
Like the call tonight's meeting to honor Friday, December 6, 2024. Social Union on Capitol. Would you please stand for the pledge?
Let's reach the state of the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. Foundation under God in Minnesota with the justice for law.
The whole call, please.
Mr. Bale.
Here.
Mr. Copeland.
Here.
Mr. Drexel.
Here.
Mr. Horton.
Here.
Mr. Showerman.
Here.
Mr. Winarski.
Here.
Chairman Scatella.
Here. Next will be the public will receive three minutes to speak. Basically, I hope you're speaking to the budget, which we talked about, I guess, whatever you want. We were strictly here for the budget in these issues. I don't know. Well, we can do this. Is there anybody in the room here that would like to speak? Help me. Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to speak?
Yes, I have my hand up.
Okay.
This is Freda Tepfer, and I listened to the sessions where, and I, I agree with most of the changes that the council made. I just want to highlight a few things. I support especially number 11, the money for the childcare. I want to note that Councilmember Winarski voted for that, but he did not vote for the overriding ARPA. So it's important to realize that if you support the childcare, you have to make sure that it's totally there in the budget, whatever that means. I support the Grow Erie, the money for the DEI Commission, the, the Human Relations Commission and the staffing for the UN Relations Commission, the money for affordable housing, Pleasant Ridge, the staffing requested by the sheriffs and the courts and elected officials other than the executive. Eliminate any transfers from the Gaming Authority or ARPA that were proposed by the executives and eliminated in the budget, specifically the EMS, economic development. The money went going to planning and the PIO officer, the municipal and EMS money. I think that you folks did a pretty good job. However, it is important that all members of the council realize that it is important. It is important to restore these funding items, and we do need another vote in order to pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Francis Karen. Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Would you please?
She doing.
Next person that wants to speak from Zoom. Is there anybody else that would like to just speak up and I'll call you out? Seeing that, I guess we'll move on.
How we got very good at this, your colleague?
We'll move on to the administration. Attorney Spears.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Bill Spearos County Solicitor here on behalf of the administration. I think it's pretty clear that on this budget and on many items, the administration and this council don't always see eye to eye to put it mildly. And that's reflected in the 32 vetoes that are on the agenda for tonight. Of these 32, about half have been designated as by Solicitor Talarico as invalid or illegal vetoes. And it has been characterized as an increase to the budget. Let me give an example of an action sheet by council that may decrease a particular expenditure. The county executive veto is that action sheet cancels that action by council. That would have the effect of restoring that expenditure back to the proposed amount, which Solicitor Talarico was argued as an increase or inappropriate appropriation of money by the county executive. It's that type of veto that I'm speaking to right now. Another example, number 32, the item number 32 on the agenda tonight, the proposed tax village. Again, when that action sheet is vetoed, it's not a veto of all taxes. It's a veto to cancel the action by council and restore the proposed amount. The proposed taxes by the administration. Again, we may not see eye to eye on that, but that's the type of veto that I'm talking about. As a result of that position taken by council, those items are on the agenda tonight, subject to a motion to strike as opposed to an override vote. To be clear, whether or not these types of vetoes are valid or invalid, that has been in litigation for over two years now, and we do not have a decision on that. We won't have one until early 2025 at the earliest. The administration believes that its legal position is solid, that these vetoes, as well as the seven that are in dispute from 2022 and four that are in dispute from 2023, that they are well within the county executive's authority under the Home Rule Charter, and therefore valid. But I'm not here tonight to make legal arguments about that. Those have been made in court, and at some point, we'll get a decision about the validity of those types of vetoes. What is clear is dispensing with those vetoes via a motion to strike rather than an override vote is illegal. It is 100% unequivocally a violation of the Home Rule Charter. There is nowhere in the Home Rule Charter, in the budget process, that permits a motion to strike a veto instead of an override vote. Why is that? Because you cannot dispense a veto. You cannot reject a veto with only four votes. It takes a super majority of five affirmative votes to reject a veto. And that's why it's written in the Home Rule Charter that way. I promise you, I am not here tonight to push any political or personal agenda. I'm not here to advocate for the policy reasons behind any of these vetoes or the expenditures related to them. I'm not even here to advocate whether you each should vote yes or no on these vetoes. If you believe that you should override a veto, either because you don't agree with the veto or because you think it's invalid, then by all means, you should exercise your right to vote yes on the override. If you agree with the veto, you should vote no on the override. And the process will play out the way it's supposed to. From a legal perspective, it makes no difference to me whether you vote yes or no. I'm not here to advocate one way or the other. I am here today for one reason only, as the chief legal officer in Erie County, and that is to make sure you do not pick the law. If this council votes to strike vetoes from the agenda rather than taking an override vote, as I said, it is a clear violation of the Home Rule Charter. The charter requires a super majority of five votes within 10 days. If you do not get that, the veto remains in the budget. It is clear in black and white to the Home Rule Charter. It has nothing to do with whether or not you believe these vetoes are valid or invalid. Because if you believe they're invalid, you should vote yes on the override. At some point, Solicitor Talarico, and I will hear the court's decision as to the validity of those vetoes. But what is clear is what the process should be. And that is override votes need to be taken on every one of these vetoes tonight. And just as they should have been taken on the seven vetoes in 2022 and the four vetoes in 2023. Please follow the law and the budget process in the Home Rule Charter. You, that's why you were elected to these chairs is to help govern this county in accordance with the law, not to circumvent it. That's all I wanted to say on behalf of the administration tonight. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chair. Attorney Spears's points are well taken and it parts compelling. Although I do hold a different point of view, given that the Home Rule Charter says that the executive shall propose a budget. And this proposed budget does not have any force of law until such case, the council does not take up to adopt its own budget. At that point, it would become law. But once the council has adopted the official budget, the executive may veto or reduce any line contained within it. This veto power does not include, in my opinion, the power to veto action sheets as they are not defined in the Home Rule Charter, but are simply a vehicle for which we make decisions about the budget in a public transparent way. That is simply a deliverative vehicle that we use in order to establish. I would also say that to veto or reduce any item contained within it should not be the power to add new revenues or expenditures not contained within the adopted budget. That the power to add new revenues to the budget that would necessitate transfers from other sections of the budget, which do not contain those transfers. And it doesn't get the power to redirect funds to new entities or departments not previously defined in either the proposed budget nor the adopted budget. And I just feel it's really important to state my opinion on that. Following our votes, if, if they are struck, in my view, I don't believe that a strike is illegal. It's simply us refusing to take up a vote on that veto because we consider not to have force of law behind. That veto is not proper for the Home Rule Charter. So I just want to state my opinion. I would also say if the strike strikes are successful, I suggest the council make a motion at the end of the meeting to add those strikes. The current litigation has been ongoing through the last two years. Because we need an urgent immediate response just to settle the difference of opinion on what the very few words that are in the Home Rule Charter actually.
On that, I couldn't agree more. We do need a decision.
Yeah.
If I may, just 30 more seconds, Mr. Chairman. I think you had slightly misquoted what's in the Home Rule Charter. It's not, you may veto or decrease any line in the budget. It's any item.
I.
And the action sheets are items in the budget. If that portion of the Home Rule Charter had meant to mean line item, it would have stated so. Because throughout the local charter, items are qualified as being either line items or appropriation items, et cetera. These are items in the budget, and the action sheets are items in the budget, just like anything else. And when you remove that action sheet, it is as if council didn't take that action. That's what veto means. It means to cancel. And if you cancel that action, it's as if council didn't take that action. And what does the Home Rule Charter say about council not taking action? They don't take action, then January 1st, that proposed amount becomes the budget. So unless it's overridden properly through the budget process of the Home Rule Charter, it's as if council didn't do anything to that line item. And the proposed line item becomes the budget.
Mr. Chair. I know with respect, so Attorney Spears, I really appreciate you coming down today. But isn't that what the judge will decide?
Yes, sir. That is the judge will decide.
Yeah, maybe because you stated that you weren't here to litigate it or anything. I respectfully appreciate you clarifying the difference in item versus line item or action sheet. But we don't want to litigate this. We got a court date. It'll be coming up here very shortly in the judge's side.
Very well, thanks.
Just a question.
Yes, sir.
If we vote the way you don't see are we in violation of the Home Rule Charter, are we in violation of any type of law other than Home Rule Charter? I thought you said two things, violation of law and violation of the charter.
In violation of the law is a violation of the charter. The Home Rule Charter is our, that's the main, the main law we have here in the county. That's our constitution. And that's it. Calls for the separation of powers, the checks and balances.
Not criminal.
If you're asking whether I think the police are going to come here to arrest any of you if you move to strike, I don't think that will happen.
No, I just, I just. With all due respect, I just don't. I want the proper wording, so it doesn't look like a threat to.
No, I, I, that's, that's my concern. Mr. Chairman, I did not come here tonight to threaten anyone. I just want to make sure that the budget process plays out in accordance with the law as stated in the Home Rule Charter.
Which I think we all.
Can we, it's Friday evening, and we've got some ground to defend respectfully, could we just take care of this?
Anything else? All right, let's move on to. We have a switch of giving ordinance number 96. And we're going to vote on every one of these attached, I missed that. So. Item A.
Ordinance number 96, 2024, County Council Action to Override or Strike the Executive's Veto of November 27, 2024.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Make a motion to amend ordinance 96 per the document that's before you with changes to items 1, 2, 4, 7, and 11 and 21 as discussed in our finance meeting. Plus the second.
Is it second?
Second.
Do you think you should review those?
In detail, well, I believe that the revised was published. Did you use on?
No.
No, I didn't. Mr. Talarico. Is there an issue that? Why? I, I mean, who's the one clarification you're looking?
I just didn't know what the public here should say that those changes are.
Um, various languages. I mean, those amendments have been made public online, correct? I don't like to talk about posting those.
It may to be online. It wasn't part of the agenda packet that was published.
Would it be more acceptable if we make each, as we make each motion to make?
Sure.
Do that.
I think it would be clear to people that maybe word at other meetings.
Okay. Okay. That's, that's my, I'll draw my motion, and instead I will make a motion to consider item one for County Council moves the strike executive veto order 72 as amended to eliminate reduction to $100,000 for the game. Yeah, and that's. Sorry.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm going to have a few things to say about a couple of things. I got an email communication here from October 23rd, well, some time ago on the budget process, pointing out that this $100,000 of gaming funds did not actually have a a matching transfer in the gaming fund budget. It is essentially a check without routing number. And being that there is no attempt to add a transfer into the gaming fund, this was as a source, and the administration responded on October 24th and saying that they agreed with that as well. And they would give us an action sheet to fix it. No such action sheet was ever delivered to council, and so council attempted to fix it by removing the erroneous transfer.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Charlie.
So I'm, I'm, I don't know if this is the appropriate place. You know, there, I had some questions. And since we're starting off here, I thought we would, with the original ordinance, it's, the question I have is, so the email that we got from Attorney Talarico with the vetoes, the ordinance and stuff, I noticed that that email went out to council, our accountant. But I also saw in the CC line that it went out to our former accountant, Mr. Maloney. I'm a little confused by that, I guess. Is Mr. Maloney an employee again? If he is, I don't remember any discussion.
Point of, but from point of order, point of order, there's a motion on the floor. If you have something relevant to this motion.
It's relative to the budget, and it's relative to the process. I'm, I'm trying to get some clarification.
On the floor, and you stated that you didn't know that this was the right place. And then what I'm attempting to convey is that this isn't the right moment to do that, not trying to dissuade your question, but.
That's fine. We can deal with this, and we'll, we'll come back to it.
Any other discussion? All for the vote.
Mr. Horton.
Will the strike, yes.
Mrs. Showerman, no. Mr. Winarski.
No.
Mr. Bale.
No.
Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Mr. Drexel.
Yes.
Chairman Scatella.
Yes.
And that was a motion to strike, so that carries by a vote of four and three.
Mr. Chair, motion for item number two, move the strike. We have ordered 72.
There's a second.
Sorry.
Any discussion?
I really, I don't want to talk you guys here off. I, I just wanted to state that this is a move to strike in this semi irrelevant. There was a statement that somehow there was some kind of confusion about this, and that was related to ARPA funds or something, and I just wanted to make very clear. This fund balance of Act 13 Greenway had been intentionally saved up for some time to fund specific greenways projects. I had some concern about awarding them all grants, you know, all this year. This has been some savings for some years, and I just wanted to make the point to say that I'm okay with approving projects like the Union City Ballfields, which we made an appropriation for. I just asked that we not have large discretionary grant funds to be awarded at the discretion of the executive, and then each be throughout the board counts and votes.
Any other discussion? All for the question to strike.
Mrs. Showerman, no. Mr. Winarski.
No.
Mr. Bale.
No.
Mr. Copeland.
Sorry, was that me or you called?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Drexel.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Chairman Scatella.
Yes.
Again, it's a motion to strike, and it carries by a vote of four and three.
Three.
Mr. Chair, motion for number three, motion to override veto order 73 as amended for domestic relations position.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Sorry.
Any discussion? All for the question to veto.
Mr. Winarski.
No.
Mr. Bale.
No.
Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Mr. Drexel.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman, no. Chairman Scatella.
Yes.
That motion fails by a vote of four to three.
Four.
Excuse me?
It passes.
That's a motion. No, the motion over right takes super majority.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So again, that motion failed.
Number four.
Mr. Chair, move to strike executive veto order 76 to decrease salary increases for the 911s.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All for the question.
The motion to strike, Mr. Bale.
No.
Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Mr. Drexel.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman, no. Mr. Winarski.
No.
Chairman Scatella.
Yes. All right.
That motion passes.
All right.
Mr. Chair, move the strike executive veto order 77 for 2025 gaming fund budget for proposed EMS programs to zero.
Second.
Any discussion? All for the question.
Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Mr. Drexel.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman, no. Mr. Winarski.
No.
Mr. Bale.
No.
Chairman Scatella.
Yes.
And that motion carries by a vote of four to three.
Six.
Mr. Chair, move the strike executive veto ordinance number 77 as amended to increase funding for Missland Project program to zero.
Second.
Any discussion? Call for the question to strike.
Mr. Drexel.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman. Mr. Winarski.
No.
Mr. Bale.
No.
Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Chairman Scatella.
Yes.
Motion carries four to three.
Seven.
Mr. Chair, discussion. Just wanted to make clear in the gaming fund here and the way that these votes have been going. There are $4.5 million of expenses attempted to be added in between items number five and six. This would require a fund balance appropriation as listed in number seven. Also contained within these vetoes are an attempt to add in a $100,000 transfer to planning and another $2.1 million to the general fund. Even if the, the administration's legal position held true, there simply is not enough funds available in the gaming fund budget. There's not enough fund balance appropriated to cover that amount. It's a deficit of about $2 million. Further, it's not immediately clear if we have that much cash on hand in the gaming fund budget. And so I'm not entirely sure if those votes on motions to strike are because they disagree in principle with the item or if they disagree with the legal position being put forward. But I think that's an important thing to note, that there is an attempt to spend more money out of the gaming fund than there is available. I just want to make that clear. Moving on to seven, correct?
Yes, number seven.
Number seven. A motion to strike the executive veto order number 77 as amended to decrease gaming fund balance appropriate for 4.2 million to zero. Second.
Any discussion?
You said strike. This does override. Just making sure.
Seven, seven as amended, and I apologize, we, we meant to do that because that one was amended because it is an attempt to add back in a revenue that had been removed from the budget. It does not exist in the adopted budget, and therefore you can't veto nothing. Is the position being carried by this one? Sure.
Any other? Question? Offer, offer the question to strike.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman, no. Mr. Winarski.
No.
Mr. Bale.
No.
Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Mr. Drexel.
Yes.
Chairman Scatella.
Yes.
Motion to strike number seven as amended. They, sorry, passed it by a vote of four to three.
Mr. Chair, move to override the executive veto ordinance number 79 Pleasant Ridge Manor operating budget to transfer $500,000 from the general fund to Pleasant Ridge Manor operations.
Is there a second?
Sorry.
Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
Mister Chair.
Who's?
Mister Chair.
Yes, sir. Uh, first and foremost, one hundred percent supportive Pleasant Ridge Manor, their ask was five hundred thousand dollars. As always, if they need additional funds, we've always granted it to them, but they asked in this budget five hundred thousand dollars. I am a. No vote to changing it, but a definite, uh. Yes, if additional funds are needed later in twenty twenty-five, thank you.
Thank you. Shoshone.
Well, that's basically what I was going to say that, um. They agreed to the amount that we. Had in the budget for them, I know it'd be tight, e- everybody's really tight. I absolutely support them and I, if they need something down the road, I will also. Will back, that's, that's part of what we do, but to put it in with extra as is, I'm going to be a no as well.
Mister Chair. I would like to refresh everyone's memory of our budget meeting, uh, with Mister Donor from Pleasant Ridge. Where we were told that Pleasant Ridge's initial draft budget said that they needed two million dollars of operating expense. They had been asked to do what I consider a Herculean task, to cut a million dollars out of their budget. And to some extent, I think that those numbers were fibbed in order to arrive at the number they were asked for. And Pleasant Ridge did not ask for five hundred thousand dollars, their department request in the budget is nine hundred ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred ninety-eight dollars. Uh, which would further reduce to a quarter of the original ask by Pleasant Ridge. If somebody misremembers that somehow Pleasant Ridge only ever asked for five hundred thousand dollars, that is certainly not the case.
Anybody else? Just, and I agree with what Mister Copeland said about the ask of it. Mister Donor had stated. But to cut it down to five hour, five hundred thousand dollars, you're setting up Pleasant Ridge Manor to fail. That's what you do. Forget about who we like and who we don't like, let's do something for people that do it the most and that's. And, and adding in five hundred thousand dollars might not do it, but it can't hurt. All for the question.
Mrs. Showerman, no. Mister Winarski.
No.
Mister Bale.
No.
Mister Copeland.
Yes.
Mister Drexel.
Yes.
Mister Horton.
Yes.
Chairman Scatella.
Yes, without a doubt.
And that motion fails by a vote of four to three.
Mister Chair, motion to strike executives veto ordinance number eighty-two ARPA plan, uh, fund budget. As amended to reduce the seventy-five thousand dollar transfer to the planning department.
Sir, any discussion? All for the question.
Mister Winarski.
No.
Mister Bale.
No.
Mister Copeland.
Yes.
Mister Drexel.
Yes.
Mister Horton.
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman, no. Chairman Scatella.
Yes.
Motion carries by a vote of four and three.
Mister Chair, discussion. Item number ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen. Uh, are, just for clarification for the audience and everyone around, uh, are going to be two motions. One, to strike the, the idea that somehow there's a restoration of funding should, uh, the override fail. Uh, is our position that, uh, these appropriations were not contained within the budget, or I should say my position. Uh, and, uh, so it'll be two motions, first for number ten, motion to strike the executives veto. Uh, as amended to reduce the funding for municipal, uh, infrastructure of, um, two million, five hundred thousand dollars.
Sorry. Second, is there any other discussion? All for the question to strike.
Mister Bale.
No.
Mister Copeland.
Yes.
Mister Drexel.
Yes.
Mister Horton.
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman, no. Mister Winarski.
No.
Chairman Scatella.
Yes.
Motion carries four to three.
Now we need a motion.
Mister Chair, motion override, uh, to, uh, transfer and increase funding to diverse. Diversity equity and inclusion commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
Yes, Chair, if I could.
Please.
Depending on how these lawsuits work out. And let's say the judge agrees with the position the council has taken for the last two budgets. The, the increase funding to municipal gap fund has been rejected. And if the judge agrees with us that that is true and right. And we do not override this veto, that would put us in the position that no dollars have been appropriated. And that is true with all four of these votes that are, are coming up. Uh, and so I just would caution my colleagues, uh, to exercise great caution. Uh, because we don't want to screw around with these dollars, we lose them if they do not get appropriated this year. Uh, and we really want to make sure we get this money into the community, into the hands of the people that it was intended to benefit. Uh, and, 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 and leave it that.
Any other discussion?
Uh, Mister Chair.
Yes.
Carrying on the, carrying forward the point that, uh, Rock has just made and particularly to Mister Winarski. The, these next four. Veto is concerned. Uh, the loss of ARPA monies for good. And that would mean that. They roughly eight million. Eight, eight million dollars of ARPA money that the administration has had for the last three years. And has intended and even appro- even earmarked them for municipal gap money. That was never used for the past three years. Uh, if this is not overridden. The. This money goes back to the United States Treasury. And Erie County loses that eight million dollars, all because of this veto. So I would hope that all council members, Ellen and, uh, especially you, Jim. Uh, think long and hard about, uh, where, you know, the possibility of losing this money. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Any other discussion? All for the vote to override.
Just for clarification, where are we?
No, we, we voted on the strike of the ARPA dollars in ten and now are doing the override intent to transfer to the.
Mister Copeland.
Yes.
Mister Drexel.
Yes.
Mister Horton.
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman, no. Mister Winarski.
No.
Mister Bale.
No.
Chairman Scatella.
Yes.
And then motion fails by a vote of four to three.
Eleven.
Mister Chair, move to strike executives veto ordinance eighty-two, uh, to reduce the funding for the municipal instr- infrastructure. Of two million, five hundred thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All for the question to strike.
Mister Drexel.
Yes.
Mister Horton.
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman, no. Mister Winarski.
No.
Mister Bale.
No.
Mister Copeland.
Yes.
Chairman Scatella.
Yes.
Motion to strike carries by a vote of four to three.
Now there's. A motion to override the veto.
I need a, yeah, uh, Mister Chair, motion to override, uh, the veto for the increased, uh, transfer funding to Ecker or. Uh, to Ecker Child Initiative of two million, five hundred thousand dollars.
Mister Chair.
Mister Jackson.
I would keep this short, you're going to give all this money back and it's going to fall at your feet, everyone is voting against this, so make sure you understand that.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll add a point. Um, I support this a, a hundred percent, um. I was super excited the, the day that, uh, Mister Drexel, uh, came to me with this idea. While supporting this, uh, child in the issue, um, the, the, the incredible, uh. Team of people that have been assembled and tackled this issue is, is really impressive. And, um, this is economic development, this is community development, this is, um. Providing for a desperate need in our community that COVID. Did a terrible number on this entire industry. And our future success really depends on people's ability to, to be able to get into work. And childcare is a big part of that, as somebody with young children myself, I know that's been a tremendous battle. I've, I've seen the weightless and, uh, I, I really hope that we can put this money to good use, um, to, to start tackling this problem.
I too would like to, I am supporting this due to the fact that many years ago. When my, both my parents had to work, we didn't have childhood development, you learned it at home. Or it's a different world. And it's kind of interesting when we brought the people in from child development, we spoke to it. And, and, and just to go back, forty-seven years later. Actually, I had my first child and we were both working parents. And we had a, for the, for our child and child to develop. Now. I don't know, forty-seven years ago, I now have a grandson, nineteen months old. Can't stay home with Grandma and Grandpa. Has to go socialize with other people and develop as a child. So we're in it again, very interesting state. That they made, the one person made when they were discussing early childhood. Was forgotten. She explained it, forgotten is you had a child and that childcare, that child is a major, take care of himself. He's in high school or whatever, you forget about what you went through and what other people are going through. And that, I was part of that too. From my daughter to my grandson, in between. I had a second child, my wife stayed home with the second child, but because you weren't involved with child. Would develop. You forgot about it, you forgot about the people that are going the same situation that I went through in and, and many more. I know, I know Chris is, um, going through it. It's not about the administration, it's not about council, it's about our young people. And, and around this building, there's so much talked about economic development. Which I have failed to see happen, but this is a part of economic development. For kids, putting those kids in it, so if two parents want to go to work, they can go to work. If two parents want to start a business, they can start a business, it's about our young people, it's about our future. And I'm talking to council, I'm not talking to the administration or anybody like that. Then, and I'm sure there's people in the administration that might think the same way, but they're not. It, that's not your good position to speak to that guy. So that's all I am saying, speaking to my colleagues, whatever the vote is, we'll move on from this. All for the question.
Hold on. There's something I want to point out here that I forgot about, when we brought this up. In the first budget here and we voted on this, this passed five to two. So I expect the same thing.
Then I have a motion by. Copeland, who is our second on that?
Second.
This is to override, right?
Mister Horton.
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman, no. Mister Winarski.
Yes.
Mister Bale.
No.
Mister Copeland.
Yes.
Mister Drexel.
Yes.
Chairman Scatella.
Yes.
That motion carries with a vote of five to two.
Mister Chair. Motion to strike the executives veto ordinance number eighty-two as amended to reduce funding for municipal infrastructure. Uh, for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
They're not going to pass that asshole's budget.
This is the motion and second to, to strike, is there any discussion on this? All for the question.
Mister Horton.
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman, no. Mister Bale.
No.
Mister Copeland.
Yes.
Mister Drexel.
Yes.
Mister Horton.
Yes, again.
Chairman Scatella.
Yes.
Do I get a turn?
I voted for you, Joe, I got you, man, go back to sleep.
Mister Winarski.
No.
Mister Chair, motion to override the transfer increase of funding to redevelopment authority rural area project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mister Chair, discussion.
Please.
There has been some discussion as to, uh, who brought this forward, um, really kind of irritated that the county executive seeks to take away. Uh, the credit that I thought I should deserve, uh, because I brought this forward. Um, and I brought it forward for a very good reason, uh, because this money had been previously appropriated to the grow area project. They had since broken ground and the funding was removed from it. And I, I've seen this happen a couple of times to communities, saw it happen with Pineapple Eddie's that they thought they were going to get some funding and. Went out, bought a new building and, and, and their plans fell flat and, and look. The, the most important thing for economic development is stability in government. And so that we don't radically change directions from one, uh, administration to the next. That we don't leave people, uh, stranded when we told them we were going to give them money and then pull it from them. Uh, and so I think it was a rule injustice that was done to this organization. Look forward to the redevelopment authority working with us to administer those dollars. They do already have a contract to administer COVID dollars with the county, which just requires a simple amendment to that same. Uh, contract to administer this for the grow area project and I could not support this strongly enough.
Any other discussion? All for the question to override the veto.
Mister Winarski.
No.
Mister Bale.
No.
Mister Copeland.
Yes.
Mister Drexel.
Yes.
Mister Horton.
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman, no. Chairman Scatella.
Yes.
And that motion fails. Five vote of four to three.
Thirteen.
Mister Chair, move to strike executives veto ordinance eighty-two for ARPA plan fund budget. To reduce funding for municipal infrastructure for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All for the question to strike.
Mister Bale.
No.
Mister Copeland.
Yes.
Mister Drexel.
Yes.
Mister Horton.
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman, no. Mister Winarski.
No.
Chairman Scatella.
Yes.
Motion carries four to three.
Mister Chair, motion to override veto for the transfer increase of funding, uh, for affordable. For the purposes of affordable housing to be administered to the redevelopment authority.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah. Um, there, there's a lot of really great projects going on in our community around, uh, affordable housing and, and it's still not. Um, we have, uh, a public support housing initiative going in on Twenty First Street. We have a community land trust, which I geek out over all the time, like they're, they're really great for, uh, long-term affordable housing. Uh, we have, uh, Bill Dairy working on many projects and many others that I hope that the board of the redevelopment authority thoroughly vets. And establishes, uh, a basis of need, uh, and I really hope that this money can get to them. Uh, so that we can start tackling, uh, a really desperate need in our community. Uh, looking for a new home for my, my girlfriend and I, I can tell you, uh, there's a real lack of affordable housing in our community.
Any other discussion? Call for the question to override.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. Drexel?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman? No. Mr. Winarski?
No.
Mr. Bale?
No.
Chairman Scatella?
Yes.
Motion fails with vote of four to three.
Mr. Chair, move to override executive veto ordinance number eighty-three for the general fund budget to increase wages and fringe benefits for a new position. In the conduct of elections department.
Is there a second?
Sorry.
Any discussion?
We need this. We need this. We saw how much struggle we had. Uh for this year and um the only way that we got through that is that our elections department kicks ass. They are by far the, the best group of people I've ever seen in my life. Uh they uh have really high level morale that I just can't figure out. Um tip uh tip top, top notch. Um and when, when they ask for a, a need, um elections are really important and I think that we should heed uh that need.
Any other discussion? Um Mr. Chair, this time I believe the council members should understand that. That while, you know, obviously these employees are paid uh through the um county system. You know, these, these are councils own employees. Uh the elec- this is the county council serves, of course, has the election board as well. And these are the people that have worked as hardly as and worked very hard as we saw them do, especially this past election. And so I think council should, the members of council should consider that these are their very own employees.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Call for the question to override.
Mr. Drexel?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman? No. Mr. Winarski?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
No.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Chairman Scatella?
Yes.
Motion carries by a vote of five to two.
Uh Mr. Chair.
Mr. Charlie.
Uh before we move on and uh going back to the four ordinances involving the. Transfer of ARPA monies from municipal infrastructure purposes to the others. Uh three of those overrides pay. Meaning that the money that council planned to spend on the various organizations um is now a novelty. But what uh council and the administration should understand. Is that council did strike all of the attempts by the administration. Uh to reduce the monies earmarked for the uh infrastructure. And that means that there is no money in there. And uh the question would be where does that money go? And the answer is it doesn't go anywhere and the, and the administration doesn't have any authority whatsoever. To spend or touch that money unless he comes back to county council with a supplement appropriation. Thank you.
Thank you. You're on fifteen. Ordinance number eighty-three.
Yeah, one fifteen.
Uh motion to override executive veto ordinance number eighty-three as amended upon the human relations committee, commission.
Second.
Sorry. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Winarski?
Thank you. Uh naturally, this is not an easy decision, but uh. This office has been an issue for us for over twenty plus years. Uh in one way or another, uh one situation or another, but. We definitely got to get it figured out, but at this time I'm a no to fully funding it. But still open to a partial funding to try once again, as we've tried and said, give it one more try, give it one more try. Let's give it one more try. Well, once again, I'm, I'm willing to give it some partial funding. Once again, give it one more try and uh I know uh Karen. Has the courage to make it work, but uh. I don't want to fully fund something that has really been inoperable for uh. Last six, eight months. So at this point, I'm a no on this one. Thank you.
Mr. Winarski, just to clarify your point, um. Number fifteen, the first action sheet uh establishes the majority of the function that would be required. Uh for this to function, the, the next action sheet is for an additional position. Um. Do you mean to say that later at another time you would support a supplementary appropriation? Or that this action sheet number twelve, which was a partial funding? That that's what your no position is for?
I would say at this point, we put extra money into our professional services. But with that being said. Not fully funding it to the tune of uh. Two hundred and sixty-eight thousand on top of uh municipal rights investigator. So at this time, I'm a no.
Uh the, the, the time to add money into professional services was uh about two weeks ago.
We did.
I thought we added money to it. It was in our budget uh hearing that we did vote to add money to it.
Action sheet thirteen A was contingent on the passage or of, of. If there was no passage of, of action sheet number twelve. Uh another future action sheet would have added fifty thousand dollars to our professional fees. Uh but because it was a contingent action sheet, no additional monies were added to our professional fees.
Well, then at this point, hey, we address it. Early in twenty twenty-five and go from there.
Super tiny. Yeah, I, I guess the, the question I would have that if, if you would support um partial funding. Uh then, then I would suggest that you vote no on action sheet thirteen that added an additional position. But the, the department ceases to exist in its entirety without the passage of uh action sheet twelve.
The, the current one doesn't have the civil rights of the best theory or I think the current just has the executive director, that's the only.
This is just the executive director, lawyer fees, rent. The, 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 the existential part of it. Action sheet thirteen would be additional funding, uh which would be the full restoration of the requested budget. But I actually see twelve isn't partial funding.
Uh, Mr. Horton?
Thank you, Chairman Scatella.
It's a computer.
Okay, that seems simple enough. I think that's what uh my colleague Winarski was saying. Uh and so the question, I guess before since uh Jim is, would you agree to override item fifteen? And, and to do away with item sixteen, because I think that gets us where we want to be, where it's partially funded. And then we can deal with the professional fees later either if it in the form of a supplemental appropriation. Would that be amenable to you?
Well, I think I was, my thought process was is this isn't. Probably too late now, but um. You know, put a hundred, hundred twenty-five thousand dollars to try to keep the. And maybe we can amend it. If we can amend it still tonight, I would be more than willing to amend. We put a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars into it.
Yeah, we throw our whole budget out of whack.
We're gonna, the, the computer's gonna restart. We can't stop it in a minute. So we need to recess if we can. Or five minutes.
We're gonna recess until the computer. Re, revotes.
Yeah.
Thank you. But in the. That's right, you're here.
I would still like to, it's just because I think it's important. I, I, I get the recording stuff, but before you recess, I think this is important. Too important to just break right in the middle of it. And I would like to hear from my solicitor.
Well, um.
Looks like you got fifteen months left.
That's right. Mr. Jim?
No.
Do you hear me?
No.
Yes, yes.
Okay, well, based on your thinking, we're gonna recess in a while here. Council will discuss. The idea of amending this uh particular ordinance to uh, you know. Bring back a number that is more palatable to you.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Like that's rego to, I'm, I'm nuts. That's recess to the computer revotes.
I thank you all, my colleagues. I think, listen, it's been a tough budget and I commend all of you. I want to thank all of you for your commitment uh to, uh it hasn't been an easy budget. I want to thank all of you for your commitment to, it hasn't been an easy budget.
Do you feel that we can override to an amount in between?
I think, no, we can't do it that way. We have to get him to agree to override. And then we'll agree. So it's two thirty eight. So we're up at two thirty eight. So he agrees, he agrees to override this. Override the veto. And then we agree to cut this budget by seventy five thousand dollars. And eliminate it as an expense.
How do we do that out of budget? How do we do that out of budget?
We, we don't, we do it later on.
Can't do it. What, what, there's, you can supplementary appropriate funds to add into the budget, how can you remove them?
Karen can as a department, so we're not going to spend that money.
Okay. Yeah, but it still goes into the expenses that go to the bottom line and establish. I think a lot of this is leading up to a potential hope on tax increase to say, if these expenses stay in. Tax increase required, and I think that's what's the main.
I don't think they're that sophisticated, I'm sorry. But I'm trying to do a review of that. This is very simple. What we have here is a guy that is struggling with his heart and soul. And if that's the case, we convince him to override, if he will. Yeah, anyway, well, that's okay, because that's, I appreciate some of the struggles with their heart. And so my proposal is that I tell him to vote to override it. And that by his number, you mentioned one fifty or something, one twenty five, one fifty? That he's willing to do that, so override it, and then we will take the seventy five thousand.
I did, I don't have the authority here for your process, but let me just say that first. Right now, the action sheet is for two hundred and thirty eight thousand. If you're too, if you're actually talking, seems to be about amending that action sheet, one fifty or something like that. You know, it's some palatable amount. You're going to take an override vote on two thirty eight as is.
Correct, okay.
And then later, and we'll agree.
If you need to, you could appropriate appropriation, somewhere old appropriation, where lower somewhere.
That's right. And in the meantime, though, is the different, if he says one fifty, we will make a verbal promise. Counsel will promise itself that it will expend seventy five thousand.
I, I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't an amendment of an action sheet, that the administration wasn't going to actually review in detail. Correct. This is, if it were on the agenda, is the one that's going to vote.
We all agree there's no other to change.
It may not, we're committing, I agree, but that's.
Take it as on the action sheet.
Oh, Chris, come on back.
I've already been back.
Hey, Jim. Hello, hello, Chris.
Chris ain't back. Chris is still revoicing.
Chris.
Well, we're not going to vote, I could talk to him on behalf of counsel.
Yeah.
Jim?
Yes, sir.
I spoke with counsel, and I also spoke with our captains. And the only way that we could do this is we have to stay with the ordinance and the veto as is. The amount, the amount in the budget is two hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars. The, the only way we can do this is if we vote for, vote for the override. So the two thirty eight is in place. But then we take seventy five thousand dollars out of that for that budget for expenses, so that it goes into, the expenses are gone, right? Just eliminated. Karen will, Karen will tell us next week that she'll give us a revised budget of seventy five thousand dollars or less. And so if you agree to override it, you'll get, that whole amount to the, the Human Relations Commission getting only a hundred and fifty thousand. Is that palatable?
Sound of a big third microphone here.
I'll be honest with you, it does sound a little confusing. I mean, can't we just figure this out after this budget? On what Karen will need to try to get this office back in order? There's plenty of money in the general fund to, if she comes for an ask, we'll take care of it. But it's no chance in fully funding it if, if if the office has been incompetent to this point.
If you're talking about doing a supplemental appropriation that relies on the executive to provide a, a bond balance certification, which they would certainly refuse to do.
Yeah, Jim, there's too much, there's procedure in the way to do that. But before we recess, you talked about, you know, maybe less money, I thought you said one twenty five or one fifty. So I'm saying the way, the, the only way, given this late time period, that we could do that is for you to override. And then we, and then Karen comes back and reduces the budget by, you know, seventy five thousand dollars. So it's really the same thing, that you're, you say, let's put this off for another day. We are putting it off for another day. If you vote to override, we have the two thirty eight, and then she comes in next week and subtracts seventy five from it.
No, we're doing under publics.
Understand? It's really simple.
I'm hearing, but there again, it's just like the same, same thing I'm asking, why can't we just hold off till next year, let's get it figured out? Instead of putting two hundred and thirty eight thousand into a budget on top of a civil rights investigator, let's, at this point, let's hold off, but I don't want to close that we're giving up on the HRC.
Well, I understand, but the problem is that a veto is to eliminate the Human Relations Commission entirely. So if that isn't overridden, it's gone, and there's no tomorrow to bring this thing back.
I'm going to disagree with that. I, I think if it is, if the veto is not overridden, I think we can come back in January and develop a plan and look at all of our options. And it doesn't have to be today, and I don't, just because we, it doesn't mean that it's over for ever.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, lady.
Well, no, at the end of the day, there's still pending cases, it's not.
Order. Order, hold on.
We have not officially returned from recess.
Yeah.
So let me just answer this conversation, so that it's on the record as public.
Yeah, so let me just answer, Ellen, we know the council does not have the authority to appropriate.
Point of order, the chair, please gather us in, we are the quorum, and subject to such time, we'll gather us back in.
We are now back from the recess, the computer has, we would. You want to continue though?
Yes, I'll continue. Ellen, as you know, we don't have the authority to appropriate, so we would have to, next year, ask the administration for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or three hundred thousand dollars to the Human Relations Commission, and that is never, that's not a practical, that's never going to happen. So this thing either dies tonight or it, it, it lives by the skin of its teeth. And so since Jim is, doesn't want it to go, what I was explaining, Jim, the reason we, we're not in a, we're not, and procedurally, we're not in a position to do what you would request. And that is adjust the numbers. It's too late to adjust the numbers right now. We're not legally allowed to do that at this point. So the only thing we could do is leave the agenda alone as it is. Override the veto of two hundred and thirty eight thousand and the elimination of the Human Relations Commission. Override that, and then Karen will present a a request next week to cut her budget by seventy five thousand dollars, so it brings it down to about one fifty, which be, would be, you know, minimal to get that thing started back up again.
Karen? Thoughts?
I think what I stated before, there are very clear reasons why this commission has failed in the past. And there's a very clear path forward, and I'm very confident about the path forward. I don't think it's, I mean, it's up to you guys voting on this, but this is something that can be accomplished. It hasn't had proper oversight, it hasn't had training through PHRC in, in years. We have the opportunity for the PHRC to come here, to train us, to do the intakes, to do the investigations alongside of us, with us, coaching us, and bringing a team on to accomplish this in Erie County, there's nothing here like the Human Relations Commission. This is a growing trend, and Pennsylvania is in the lead with that. We're, we're talking about going in the wrong direction when we have an opportunity to really get it on track for once, and, and I'll be jumping in, we'll have, you know, a, a new director starting to, to take the reins with this. So I have every confidence that we can get it back on track. I can, we can see why it's failed previously. So I'm, I'm asking for some help to keep it alive now, and we can explore those options, I thought I laid out a good plan. If we're not ready for that right now, like I also had shared, I'm looking for some additional funding streams to help with this project. But those can't be done right at this time, there are, are other timelines for, for that money to be able to be accessed. So at this time, if you would vote to override, that would keep it alive, it keeps it alive at two hundred and thirty eight thousand, but if you're saying that you want that to be cut, then we can, we can propose that in, in a supplemental, or however, however legally that you would do that to say, look, my budget is now, you know, I projected it at two hundred and thirty eight thousand, but I've reconsidered, and I'm going to make a budget for this department at a hundred and fifty, or a hundred and twenty five, whatever the numbers we're talking about, and see where we can go from there. But if we don't override it, then there is no more commission. It, it can't, just because there's pending cases doesn't mean that there's an existing commission, there's a responsibility and obligation for the county to resolve those. But I think this is a good point where we can move forward. And we need to do that, we have to override it, and then the money can be modified after the fact, we just can't change the number that's on the paper right now, because that's not something we can do in this process today. Like Attorney Hallarico said, we can do that next week.
Okay. I'm fine with that, I would say, let's just take a hundred off of the two thirty eight, make it one, one hundred and thirty eight thousand, and move on from them, if that sounds good to my colleagues.
That sounds crazy to me, Jim, I think one fifty is a fair number, and I think anything less than that is effectively saying that you don't want, by your actions, that you're not, you're not really interested in the HRC. And I fail to see why twelve thousand dollars would keep the community from having such a veto.
My question was, would this just be voted on? Or how will, how will that work?
No, you would just have to take Karen's word for coming across.
No, I mean, once, when the figure is decided on, do we vote?
Or there'll, there'll be no figure decided.
This is a bullying decision, we can either override or not.
Yeah, that's all.
I understand that, but you're talking about next week, coming up with a different figure, does that require a vote?
I guess she's asking a new plan. We would have to vote on it this counter.
Any supplemental appropriation, being, yes, we'd have to vote on it. And I'm sorry if I feel, if it sounds like I'm getting irritated, it's because I am getting irritated on Friday evening, I'm sitting here discussing twelve thousand dollars, Lord knows.
I'm worried about twelve thousand dollars, Andre, okay? If it's one fifty, I'm fine with that.
Can, can we move on?
The motion's on.
The motion's on, and that was a hard, hard discussion. So off of the question, as long as all the discussion is done, to override the ordinance number eighty three.
The two hundred and thirty eight.
A motion by Mr. Copeland and a second by Mr. Guxel. Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman? Yes. Mr. Wodarski?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
No.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. Guxel?
Yes.
Chairman Scatella?
Yes.
The motion carries six to one.
Mr. Chair, motion to strike number sixteen in consideration.
Is there a second?
Second.
I don't think we need any discussion. But is there? Off of the question.
Mrs. Showerman? Yes. Mr. Wodarski?
No.
Andre, or Jim, just to be clear, I, I struck sixteen on the grounds that you would not have the two hundred and thirty eight thousand, this would add additional funding, so I'm striking it for that consideration.
I, I told you, if you just let me vote for you, we could get this done, Jim.
All right, I'll give you a yes, Andre.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Hold on.
We still have that money in the budget. So I think that it should go through the override vote. And rather than strike it, if we strike it, then what, what about the money for the position? The, the executive is vetoed, that we can't strike his veto.
Yeah. That's a point of clarification.
So we have to vote on that overriding, if it fails, fails.
Right.
Since it fails, we're at where we want to be.
Right.
Did everybody hear that?
So no vote is what we're looking for.
Okay, then I withdraw my motion, instead motion to override the veto for number sixteen. And then I would use. Sorry.
Second.
Mr. Wodarski?
Like I said, no.
Thank you.
Mr. Bale?
No.
Mr. Copeland?
No.
Mr. Guxel?
No.
Mr. Horton?
No.
Mr. Showerman? No. Chairman Scatella?
No.
Mr. Chair, move to strike executive veto orders number eighty three, and then to defund and eliminate the position of administrative assistants from the county executive's office.
Any discussion? Off of the vote, to strike.
Mr. Bale?
No.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. Guxel?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
No.
Mr. Wodarski?
No.
Chairman Scatella?
Yes.
Motion carries four to three.
Eighteen.
Chair, motion to strike executives veto ordinance eighty three to defund, eliminate economic development department and all associated revenue using.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, just real brief discussion. County government has positive official agencies like Ekra and the Erie redevelopment, and so County Redevelopment Authority, the, that we've elected to do some of the work of the county. And you can include the chamber in that group as well, and so this is a duplication of effort. That's why I'm casting my vote to, to strike it. We used to fund a, a position, or help fund a position through the chamber that worked through planning, where this type of work was always situated. And it cost us a hundred and fifty thousand dollars over three years. And just the expenditures that we're spending just on salary and wages and benefits does not justify us keeping this position, keeping this department, and so I am voting to strike.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm not sure that this would be ordinary, but I did have a question for Mr. Spears, because I think it matters. We had a similar action sheet connected to this contingent upon the passage of this action sheet twenty that added in roughly two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the planning for two of these positions, and the computer, the computers, some travel, so the, this, this department was not being removed wholesale, but was rather as being kept partially under planning. Is it the administration's position that they that this veto would remove that funding as well, or is there just a magic check coming in for two hundred thousand dollars in planning?
No, like, like all of the vetoes of action sheets, it would eliminate councils in action with respect to this expenditure.
Right, but why did the, the executive decline to veto the action sheet related to this under plan? That causes concern.
I, I, I don't have an answer for that right now, I, I don't know. I, I don't know, I think it, it may have been because the administration understood that if the action sheet were to be vetoed, there would be no need to address the secondary action sheet.
To be clear, counsel regards these two things as deeply connected, and there is not a magical two hundred thousand dollars showing up in planning. Right? You have two new positions in planning with this veto? Pretty correct question. We have another action sheet adding two positions, travel, here, software. That action sheet had not been vetoed, our, our, this, is the executive's position that these two things are tied in the way that council had been tied together. I, I don't know why one action sheet would be vetoed and not the other, it makes no sense.
See, the other action sheet specifically named two positions that are included in this. So if, on this veto, those positions will remain in the, in the economic development department.
I just wanted to make it clear in a very public way that we all agree that that, those two positions are not in planning.
If I'm understanding what you're asking without having it in front of me, that was to perpetuate two of the positions in a different department.
Correct.
Okay. If they, if they remain in economic development, how would we duplicate those positions in another department?
Because it's the way that.
Andre, or Jim, just to be clear, I, I struck sixteen on the grounds that you would not.
Oh.
Want to have the two hundred and thirty eight thousand. This would add additional funding, so I'm striking it for that consideration.
I, I told you, if you just let me vote for you, we could get this done, Jim.
All right, I'll give you a yes, Andre.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, uh.
Hold on.
It, we still have that money in the budget. Uh. So I think that it should go through the override vote. And rather than strike it, if we strike it, then what, what about the money? Um, for the position? The, the executive is vetoed, that we can't strike its veto.
Yeah.
Well.
That's a point of clarification.
So we have to vote on that overriding that fails, fails.
Right.
Since it fails, we're, we're at where we want to be.
Right.
Okay. Did everybody hear that?
So no vote is what we're looking for.
Okay, then I withdraw my motion instead motion to override the veto for over sixteen. And then I would use.
Sorry.
Second.
Mr. Wodarski?
Like I said, no.
Thank you.
Mr. Bale?
No.
Mr. Copeland?
No.
Mr. Drexel?
No.
Mr. Horton?
No.
Mr. Showerman? No. Chairman Scatella?
No.
Mr. Chair, move the strike, uh, executive veto orders number eighty three and amendment to fund and eliminate the position of administrative assistance from the county executive's office.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All for the vote. To strike.
Mr. Bale?
No.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. Drexel?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
No.
Mr. Wodarski?
No.
Chairman Scatella?
Yes.
Motion carries four to three.
Eighteen.
Mr. Chair, uh, motion to strike executives veto. Uh, ordinance eighty three to defund, eliminate economic development, uh, department and all associated revenue using.
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, just real brief discussion. Um, uh, county government has positive official, it, agencies like Ekra and the area redevelopment and local county redevelopment authority, the, uh, uh, that we've elected to do some of the work of the county. Uh, and, and you can include the chamber, uh, in that group as well. And so this is a duplication of effort. Uh, that's why I'm casting my vote, uh, to, to strike it. Uh, we used to fund a, a position or help fund a position through the chamber that worked through planning where this, um, type of work was always situated. Uh, and it cost us a hundred fifty thousand dollars over three years. And just the expenditures that we're spending just on salary and wages and benefits does not justify us uh, keeping this position, keeping this, uh, department. And so I am voting to strike.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm not sure that this would be ordinary, but I did have a question for Mr. Spears because I think it matters. Um, we had a similar action sheet connected to this contingent upon the passage of this action sheet twenty that added in, uh, roughly two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the planning for two of these positions and the computer. Uh, uh, the computers, uh, some travel. So the visit, this, this department was not being removed wholesale, but was rather as being kept partially under planning. Uh, is it the administration's position that they? That this veto would remove that funding as well, or is there just a magic check coming in for two hundred thousand dollars? In planning?
No, like, like all of the vetoes of action sheets, it would eliminate councils in action with respect to this expenditure.
Right, but why did the, the executive decline to veto the action sheet related to this under plan? That causes concern.
I, I, I don't have an answer for that right now. I, I don't know. I, I don't know. I think it, it may have been because the administration understood that if the action sheet were to be vetoed, there would be no need to address the secondary action sheet.
To, to be clear, council regards these two things as deeply connected and there is not a magical two hundred thousand dollars showing up in planning. Right? You have two new positions in planning with this veto? That's a pretty correct question. We have another action sheet adding two positions, travel. Here. Uh, software. That action sheet had not been vetoed or, or this, is the executive's position? That these two things are tied in the way that council had been tied together. I, I, I don't know why one action sheet would be vetoed and not the other. It makes no sense.
See, the other action sheet specifically named two positions that are included in this. And so if on this veto. Those positions will remain in it in the economic development.
I just wanted to make it clear in a very public way that we all agree that that, those two positions are not in planning.
If I'm understanding what you're asking without having it in front of me. That was to perpetuate two of the positions in a different department.
Correct.
Okay. If they, if they remain in economic development. How would we duplicate those positions in another department?
Because it's the way that the, the sheets are functioning because they're separate budgets. Yeah, deleting two positions here, adding two positions here, they're not technically the same positions, although they are in spirit, right?
We understood them to be those same.
Okay. Just, just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
Like it rendered that moot.
Make sure we're all on the same page that planning isn't going to get an extra fifteen thousand.
There wasn't an intent that if this action sheet fails, that there would still be two magical positions opening up in planning of money to.
Just wanted to clarify this.
That's my, that's my understanding.
And I hope you don't hear it being competitive. I just want to make sure we're all. Okay.
Discussion's done. All for the question on to strike.
Yeah. Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. Drexel?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman? No. Mr. Wodarski?
No.
Mr. Bale?
No.
Chairman Scatella?
Yes.
Motion to strike carries four to three.
Wouldn't be appropriate for us to combine the additional strikes in the same joint. Which, on the additional strikes into the same. It's also time. Okay, that's fine. I wish my, there's, there's only three of them. In this regard, there's four, but this regard is. Okay, uh, number eighteen.
Uh, Mr. Chair, motion to strike the executive veto ordinance number eighty three to reduce the wages and fringe benefits of the position of the manager of procurement and purchasing department.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All for the question to strike.
Mr. Drexel?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman? No. Mr. Wodarski?
No.
Mr. Bale?
No.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Chairman Scatella?
Yes.
Motion to strike carries four to three.
Twenty?
Mr. Chair, uh, motion to strike the executive veto of ordinance number eighty three as amended to defund and eliminate the position of the public information officer and the director of administration. Second.
Any discussion? All for the vote.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman? No. Mr. Wodarski?
No.
Mr. Bale?
No.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. Drexel?
Yes.
Chairman Scatella?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Twenty one.
Chair, yeah, motion to strike, uh, executives veto orders number eighty three establishing a limitation uh, as per, uh, based on ordinance number sixty four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call for the question.
Mrs. Showerman? No. Mr. Wodarski?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
No.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. Drexel?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Scatella?
Yes.
Motion carries five to two.
Twenty two.
Uh, Mr. Chair, motion to override executives veto of ordinance number eighty three as amended to add the position of the database administrator at the request of of course, computer department, including wages and fringe benefits.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All for the question.
Mr. Wodarski?
No.
Mr. Bale?
No.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. Drexel?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Showerman? No. Chairman Scatella?
Yes.
Motion fails four to three.
Twenty two.
Mr. Chair, motion to override executives veto ordinance number eighty three as amended to fund two vacant court reported positions, including associated wages and fringe benefits. Sorry.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I, I have some, uh, earlier we had a similar, uh, veto that I believe that we failed to override. Uh, for the domestic relations position, if I recall correctly. Um, I just want to remind council that, uh, of the budget meeting that we had with the courts in which, uh, they were informed, uh, by me on the spot that they had three positions eliminated from their budget with, uh, out their knowledge or consent. Um, that's mainly sixteen twenty, uh, code, uh, rights are, are well litigated. Uh, to not consult with a row office before eliminating positions, uh. They wanted to take us to court, uh, and I got a feeling judges are very good at that. Um, you know, that they were within their rights and they've, they've said very clearly that they needed all three of these positions. I think we failed to give them one. Uh, and I would just urge my colleagues to, um, um, get these positions in for the courts. They said it was very important.
And I believe that was a letter that we see, we received from.
From Mr. Cogol, yes.
Contal beat and I'm sure everybody read it, Mr. Sharn.
Yes, I did look into this since we had our meeting and they actually have four vacancies. And we're eliminating, eliminating two of the vacancies. And the two we're eliminating are from twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two. They've been vacant that long. So they still have two vacancies that they would have to fill before they would need uh, to fill another one. So they still have room to put two in.
Any other discussion? All for the question. To override.
Mr. Bale?
No.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. Drexel?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman? No. Mr. Wodarski?
No.
Chairman Scatella?
Yes.
Motion fails four to three.
Uh, Mr. Chair, motion to override executives veto ordinance number eighty three as amended, uh, in the Rock's pot. Uh, to fund the vacant position of civil rights clerk, our civil records clerk in the department of the prefontary, including associate wages and fringe benefits.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
Same thing, sixteen twenty rights. This, uh, this row office has indicated very strongly that they, uh, want to bring this position in, uh, or keep this position. I, I'll note that everyone that works there brings us revenue. And I think that we should help them do so.
Any other discussion?
I'll just say that this is also one that's been vacant.
Don't you think that the executives should consult with the other row offices, elected officials that are put in charge of their employees as the high, uh, with the right to hire, fire and manage?
Well, I, I think each department should thoroughly review that budget and see what's, what is in it and what isn't.
Yeah.
Let's see.
I think we're getting a little close to, uh, some issues. They, they have some rights.
Discussion.
Jim?
Charlie.
Charlie, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just think that it's worth noting that all these positions are vacant and there's been a ton of positions that, uh, have been or are attempting to be cut that have actual people in them. I think that's an important distinction as well.
Any other discussion? All for the correct question to override.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. Drexel?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman? No. Mr. Wodarski?
No.
Mr. Bale?
No.
Chairman Scatella?
Yes.
And the motion fails four to three.
Twenty five.
Mr. Chair, motion to override executives veto ordinance number eighty three to fund the position of the deputy sheriff in the sheriff's office.
Right, second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Discussion.
Mr. Bale?
Uh, yes, so obviously I'm a huge proponent of any type of safety measures and, you know, the, the law enforcement or that security option within the courthouse. What I think wasn't addressed here and that needs to be addressed before these positions is, it's my understanding there's four positions that are uh, deputy sheriff slash school resource officer that are not filled. Now those, that's a partial funding formula, so county pays twenty five percent, the schools, if they use them, pay seventy five percent and those positions are not filled. Um, there's a pretty good likelihood that they won't be filled. Most school districts have moved to a school police officer, which means it's a person that they hire of, uh, law enforcement background that isn't associated with a department. In order to be an SRO, you have to be associated with an existing department. I don't see those positions being filled and what I think would make sense is to not put these two positions in now. It would be to look to wipe out the four deputy slash SRO positions and then offer up at least one and possibly two spots later on. So we could definitely pay for one without a change to the budget via the twenty five percent four times. The second position would be a question, but I think that that's shouldn't be addressed here. I think that it should be addressed after the first of the year and when those positions can, you know, actually be addressed appropriately.
Hmm. Chair?
Well, I was just going to say that the county doesn't have the contract anymore for those school resource officers, so those positions would be eliminated in January.
To be clear, um, the school resource officers are listed as a separate group within that budget. Uh, that would not be the same resource as the officers that would provide security, uh, to the courts. We've had encouragement by both the courts and the sheriff's office to provide that same security, uh, and if memory serves, uh, and forgive me, I, my memory is fallible. But I believe that there's only three positions even budgeted under the school resource officers. One of them was built, so I fail to see how it would be possible for that to be the case.
According to HR, there's five and four are not filled as per HR today.
Yeah, but I think that the twenty twenty five budget only includes three. And I'm going to pull it up right now. Um, I stand corrected, there are one and three. Yeah, but that's a different designation as a school resource officer.
Correct, and that's why we shouldn't be addressing it here, I don't think. I think we should address those positions and then look to fill with a regular deputy after we've eliminated those positions.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Drexel? I'm surprised that this great idea of yours is coming so late.
Well, I didn't, I didn't catch it in the first round and either did anybody else apparently, but as I looked into it further and tried to find a workaround because I do, do believe security is important, so I did further research on it.
And the, the school resource budget is a totally different section than the sheriff's general budget. But, but. Pull, pull the vote.
All for the vote to override.
Mr. Drexel?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman? No. Mr. Wodarski?
No.
Mr. Bale?
No.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Chairman Scatella?
Yes.
That motion fails four to three.
Mr. Chair, motion to override, uh, veto ordinance number eighty three, uh, to fund the position of another deputy. Please call.
Is there, is there a second? All for the, we just had discussion, call for a question.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman? No. Mr. Wodarski?
No.
Mr. Bale?
No.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. Drexel?
Yes.
Chairman Scatella?
Yes.
And that motion fails four to three.
Mr. Chair, motion to override executive veto of ordinance number eighty three as amended to reduce the overtime line item, including associated fringe benefits in the sheriff's office budget in two hundred and fifty five thousand uh, to fifty thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah. Any discussion?
Th- this is the one part of the budget where I get truly purest. Uh, in our budget meetings, we found that the sheriff had been allotted zero dollars of overtime, the same for the DA that follows. November thirteenth email, we were provided action sheets that were provided by the administration, uh, requested us to run them, to put them up. Uh, to, uh, and here we have, uh, an action sheet for, uh, the sheriff, uh, and their action sheet says inadvertently left out of the administrative proposal. Both of these were seven oh votes because we all agree that these were left out of the budget. The administration is vetoing their own action sheet. It is beyond absurdity and hypocrisy. It is the most insane thing I've ever seen anyone do.
He, and can't make it up.
And just to cut down to fifty thousand dollars. I don't know who the expert is on the fifth floor, but I got, I have to assume that the sheriff's sitting up that it's been here thirty five years or so. It should be more of an expert than anybody. Um, in fact, I know that for this month's overtime, he had to go into one account to transfer to his overtime account so he can protect the people in this room. Counsel, jurors, judges, and a working staff off in this corner. You know, it's amazing. It's, it's just amazing how you put people at risk. Call for the question.
Mrs. Showerman? No. Mr. Wodarski?
No.
Mr. Bale?
Uh.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. Drexel?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Scatella?
Yes.
The motion fails four to three.
Most acid I think I've ever heard of.
There's only one that expert in your county government.
Mr. Chair, motion to override similar veto orders number three, uh, to reduce overtime line item, including associated fringe benefits in the DA's office from one hundred and forty eight thousand, four hundred and sixty eight dollars and, uh, whatever, to fifty thousand dollars.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah. Both of these were seven oh votes because we all agree the administration was in error. We allowed the administration to correct their errors. We went with their numbers. In this, uh, instance, this overtime is mostly grant funded. Well.
Question, and I believe council received a letter from the DA's office or the DA herself, and I would consider her an expert more than a lot of people in this world. All for the question.
Mr. Wodarski?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. Drexel?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Chairman Scatella?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Twenty nine.
Mr. Chair, move the strike. Executive veto, executives veto ordinance number eighty three as amended to reduce the community expense line item fifty thousand dollars to zero.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? All for the question.
Mr. Bale?
Just fail your on mute.
Sorry, it was jammed. No.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. Drexel?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman? No. Mr. Wodarski?
No.
Chairman Scatella?
Yes.
And then most of the strike carries four to three.
Forty.
Mr. Chair, motion to override executives veto of ordinance number eighty three as amended to transfer five hundred thousand dollars from the general fund, Plaza Ridge Manor.
Second, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Call for the question.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. Drexel?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Showerman? No. Mr. Winarski?
No.
Mr. Bale?
No.
Chairman Scatella?
Yes.
The motion fails four to three.
Thirty-one.
Mr. Chair, motion to strike the executive veto of ordinance number eighty-three as amended to reduce the gaming fund. Uh, uh, transfer, uh, by gaming fund revenue. Uh, by two million, one hundred forty thousand, nine hundred sixty, uh, seventy-six dollars to zero.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah.
Mr. Copeland?
This was the double revenue. The administration claimed that they intended to spend the same amount twice. Memory serves, this was a seven oh vote. Yes, it was. Um, this money does not exist in the gaming fund budget. There's no transfer there. There's not enough money in there to fund this without a supplementary appropriation.
Any other discussion? Call for the question.
Mr. Drexel?
Um, yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Showerman? No. Mr. Winarski?
No.
Mr. Bale?
No.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Chairman Scatella?
Yes.
Motion to strike carries four to three.
Thirty-two.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um, I had a discussion with Rob, um, that I'll look. What I'm suggest, what I suggest is that, uh, this particular. Uh, ordinance number thirty-two be amended. Uh, to reflect the exact veto language that the executor used. Rather than the language that I put in there, which was trying to assume what he meant. So. In order to be exact, I would suggest that this. Number thirty-two be amended as follows. County council moves to strike the executive veto of the tax mileage increase.
So move. I move for that amendment language being included.
Remember, in a second. Any other discussion? All for the question to amend.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Showerman? Yes. Mr. Winarski?
No.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. Drexel?
Yes.
Chairman Scatella?
Yes.
Motion carries six to one on the amendment.
Now voting. Call for the question, the vote.
You have a motion?
Second.
Second.
Need a motion.
I move.
Sorry.
Any discussion at all? All for the question.
Mr. Showerman? No. Mr. Winarski?
No.
Mr. Bale?
No.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. Drexel?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Scatella?
Yes.
Motion carries ten to three.
Not Mr. Chair, just to be, um, overly cautious, I would suggest could be a motion to approve. Uh, the entire ordinance as amended.
Call for the court, we don't need discussion. Call for the vote.
Mr. Winarski?
No.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I, I don't know if everybody understood that, so let's. Let's say that once again, ask for a motion to, uh, approve the ordinance.
Motion to approve the ordinance.
Uh, as amended to override or strike as amended.
And to, to be clear, this is the original document that went out with the agenda. Had some errors, I believe, in five or six areas that we worked out and. Uh, discussed in the meeting last night, uh, just putting in correct language. We're voting on making sure that this document is fair and accurate and not on policy. So move. Second.
We, any discussion at all? Well, good question.
Mr. Winarski?
Oh, then I go, no.
Mr. Bale?
No.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. Drexel?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Showerman? No. Chairman Scatella?
Yes.
And motion carries four to three.
And then thank for the grid of the order.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Horton.
Will say this respectfully as I can. But this has been the most ridiculous process that I've ever gone through. As if to adopt a budget. The information that we get were received from the administration was crazy. It was ridiculous, the numbers couldn't be trusted, still can't be trusted going forward. And I would hope that this body will consider AI of some sort. So that we can all, at least we have the same information, because clearly we don't. Uh, the administration appears to be playing by a different set of rules, uh, that I'm accustomed to playing forth with. And this body should be ashamed of itself. I'll take, I, I'm ashamed. I'm ashamed. I don't know about any of the rest of you, but I'm ashamed, uh, that we put our citizens through this. I'm ashamed, uh, that we call ourselves legislators and we advocate our responsibilities. And we give away our rights, we give away our authority. I'm embarrassed. And I hope that twenty twenty-five is a lot better. I hope that we can have a, at least a team approach. And that we're allowed to at least talk to the directors in the department heads. And then we open up a communication lane that lends itself to more effective and efficient government. Cause right now, uh, this app, this states, this really states. I've never seen anything like it before, and I hope that we never see again. We've had the, uh, at least our finance director had the decency to come and say that he was ashamed. Or not really pleased with the document that he put forward. That was the one piece of honesty that I really, really, really appreciated. And it bored, bored out, uh, and I'm not here to get on my soapbox about this. Uh, but we're elected to do better and we gotta do better. That's whether you're in the administration or down here, we gotta do better, because this ain't it.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Copeland?
I'd like to make a motion as proper, uh, to direct the solicitor to add the strikes from tonight's vote. To the existing litigation.
Do we second?
Second.
They want to discuss it? No, I will call for the question.
Is there any, uh, way you can suggest a quick?
Well, um.
I mean, it's ridiculous that it's drawn, drawn out this.
Can I answer this? The administration was asked repeatedly to agree to a friendly declaration. We could have had this settled the day after, the week after, uh, they kicked the can down the road, uh, and so here we are.
Well, there are a couple of things that prolonged it. The first, the first budget that came out, um, was in twenty twenty-two. It's twenty twenty-two and that we, I did not have authority. Counsel did not give me authority to file suit until March or April of twenty twenty-three. So that's last year. You, you know, the court does move slowly. Um, but I filed a complaint in September of twenty twenty-three. So we're an hour and, excuse me, we're a year and four months from the filing of the complaint that is not considered. By litigants as extraordinarily long time. However, it was a declaratory judgment action, which meant that there is, uh, no witnesses to take testimony from. The question was purely a matter of interpreting the home charter, so it should have gone faster. And in fact, uh, Bill and I had this done. And well, it was, it was further slowed down because the administration filed preliminary objections to my complaint. And we went through a briefing process and an arguing process based on the administration's attempt to kick the suit. Uh, to kick the lawsuit out of the court based on the issue that county council did not have the authority to sue. That was resolved and wrapped up in counsel's favor back in April or May. We then moved on to the substance of the case, namely the issue that we're arguing about tonight. And briefs were, uh, presented once again, an argument occurred once again in the center. And we expected, we did not tell the judge, but we both expected to have a decision. By September or October, before the, before this, and we didn't hear from him. So I talked to Bill and we decided, let's call the judge, see if he can get us something. Uh, before the budget and, um. He wanted oral, the judge wanted oral argument. Bill and I thought, you know, it really isn't necessary because we've argued orally before him twice already. But he wanted oral argument, so he scheduled it for January next year. We called back again, we had a teleconference, he agreed to schedule it for this Tuesday. Uh, a few days ago. That was canceled because of the weather and the courthouse is closed. We're in the process of, uh, it being rescheduled. Possibly at the end of next week or the week after. Now, if counsel wants to include. And, and of course, that's the other thing. There was an amended complaint, uh, that I filed to include. The budget of twenty twenty-three in the initial lawsuit. Now, uh, counsel, it sounds like they want to include the twenty twenty-four budget in the twenty twenty-two lawsuit. That would mean that I would contact the judge and so would Bill, in assuming Bill agreed with me. We would tell the judge, hold on. Um, it looks like this thing is ongoing and it looks like our clients want you to hear the third budget as well. And then we would file and I would file another amended complaint. I'd include everything, we'd have another argument. And I think that he'd be familiar with the issue by now, uh, and possibly we could have the decision maybe next Sunday.
Mr. Mr. Tell, I go, I intend my motion to mean the fact that I believe it was eighteen vetoes, uh, that were struck. Uh, dealing with roughly nineteen million dollars in funding, whether revenues or expenses. Um, that should add a degree of urgency to the case. Given that previously we were dealing with a handful of positions, a travel line item here and there. Which was relatively inconsequential to the overall budget. Uh, at this time, uh, it makes a massive difference, uh, and that. This should be amended with these, uh, in order to give haste to the case. Uh, that this requires urgency to deal with.
Uh, well, number one, this is not the case. The case in front of the judge is not, we don't, this is not in front of the judge. If you want to get this case and then expression of urgency. To the judge, it's a separate case altogether.
Okay.
Unless he agrees and Bill agrees that we amend the existing complaint. File all the paperwork necessary. Once again, it just doesn't happen like that. So now, there's another possibility. And that is if counsel, and I haven't thought this through. But, I mean. Yeah, there's also appeal periods involved in all of that, so you can't move it so quickly. But I could possibly go into court and ask, uh, for an injunction. To, uh, enforce these provisions. Immediately and to enforce positions as interpreted by counsel immediately, which will be argued. By the administration, I'm sure vociferously not to do that. Um, and I, we could, but it will have to be in front of him. Uh, no Erie County judge is going to take that, not at this point. And it's not going to happen overnight. I could still do that and we could see where it falls. As far as trying to get a, you know, get a temporary injunction to. Uh, fund certain things so that the county could keep on going. Because I have concerns with the last veto and that is. You know, it, it's the same old problem. The administration wants, wanted to veto the mill increase. Alright, so counsel's budget is seven million, the administration's is three and a half million. The executive, in my opinion, keeps. Uh, arguing that there somehow, when he, when counsel says no. He, the, the, his, his, um. Proposed budget comes into effect and things are restored and that's just not the law and it makes no logic at all. But he, that's, I think, what they're thinking is, and I worked this issue with Bill over and over again. And so I, I don't, I would not expect. Even if we went forward with, uh, asking for an injunction, that it would be, it would certainly be fought by the administration. And, um. Really, I would have to research it.
What's your best?
I'd have to research.
Mr. Chair, I withdraw my motion.
What, what's your best, what's your, uh, opinion on our best course of action at this?
Well, okay, so this is, this is a moving, not a moving target, but it's a, it's a, a moving case. The complexion of wish and the circumstances of which could change over the next couple of weeks. Depending on how people act and respond. Um, so I think I'd have a better answer to that as time flies. Um, but my recommendation would be to. Get this, get the lawsuit scheduled hopefully by the end of next week. And hopefully try to get an opinion from this judge out by January of next year. And I think Bill would agree with me. And as far as this thing goes, I think it should be treated separately as a separate case. Um, I think it's better to have a decision first and we would get it sooner. Than to clog that case up even more and complicate it even more. This is not only a much, uh, uh. This is a much more complicated budget and it's going to be harder to understand for a judge. And it's going to be harder for him to want to schedule something soon. So I think we leave well enough alone. Uh, make, have a decision on by the court within the next couple of weeks. And in the meantime, if circumstances change, um, during that entire time. Uh, even before the judge makes a decision on the, the, the case pending before him. I will have a better idea of whether to go into court and ask for an injunction. Which I will do. If I, if I think after doing some research, if I think this is a good idea, then we could, uh. You know, make a point with it, then I will, I would, I would consider recommending that to counsel.
Well, I, I hope my constituents, uh, those who support me and those who don't. I hope, I hope they know that my votes are a matter of public record and that I'm very, very proud of the way that I voted. And I would ask that they would examine my votes to the degree that they're willing to or want to. But I would also suggest that they examine my polyphile record as well.
Well, and I also suggest that the, that the newspaper understands this is the third time in a row. That the administration has overridden counsel's budget or tried to.
Charlie, Jim, thank you.
Hey, there's more, there's more discussion. I want to circle back to my initial question at the beginning.
Go ahead.
There was an email that went out regarding the ordinance with the vetoes. And that CC line is. And that CC line is Mr. Maloney, our former accountant. Is Mr. Maloney an employee of the county or county council?
No, no, but I believe all of our documents are public record, so if someone certainly, if I wanna reach out. Individually, personally, myself, I won't speak for the email, because I don't know what you're talking about. But if I wanna reach out to some, an outside, uh, professional, uh, then I'm certainly able and, and, and willing to do that, and I would suggest. That if you don't know, uh, are a witness or, or expert on a certain topic that you reach out as well.
Well, I'm, I'm not questioning his expertise, I'm questioning whether it's appropriate for that email to go out to somebody who's not. An employee of council or the county before it went out to anyone else. It went out to council, it went out to our, our accountants. And to me, I think that's inappropriate at best. If he doesn't work for us, he, it shouldn't have been, he shouldn't have been CC'd on the email. I'd like to know who authorized the email to go out.
Uh, uh, this is Tom, uh, Charlie. You authorized it. That email that I sent out, uh, did include Joe Maloney. Joe Maloney happens to be an expert witness in the lawsuit that you approved. Your lawyer, your solicitor to file on behalf of council, and if, uh, I need him to understand. Uh, the budgets, so long as the administration is going to keep pulling the same argument. And, uh, I will continue to use Joe Maloney as the expert, and he has. He has made an appearance in both lawsuits, and I intend to use him again if, if necessary.
Okay, so that's why that went out is because he is, uh, you know. His, his expertise has germane to the case with the administration, and that's the only reason.
That's correct, yeah.
I might also add, uh, because I, I, I like these discussions. I might also add that I'm more concerned being information comes out of our executive section. And go somewhere we get responsive before, because I think that that was the prelude, us not being able to speak. Uh, to the department heads through right to no request. I, I hate that attorney, attorney spirals left. Uh, because at that point, when we inquire about who took information out of one of our executive sessions and took it up there. Which I don't care about the information, just, yeah, my, my days are my days, my days are my days, people throw rocks and hide their hands. I, I just have an issue with. And so, yeah, your question, I'm not offended by your question, but I hope that we would have the same level of scrutiny about our session.
I agree, and I would hope that we wouldn't take it as council members to try and direct county employees to, to do what we feel is appropriate in those arenas.
Anything else? Thank you, guys. Thank you, council. Thank you.